All right. Good evening, everyone. Call to orders. The Euclid Township Planning Commission meeting for October. Well. January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. Coronation, I'm invincible with the authority of justice for all.
All right, I'll first start out welcoming everybody again for January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. This is a live meeting and it is also being recorded and held on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom will, after the commission discusses it, you'll have a chance to raise your hand and your questions will be answered. And with that, I, we need to reorganize the meeting tonight. Do I have a nomination for? A chairman?
Great, I'll recommend Dennis Miller for chair.
Martin. What?
Martin. Martin.
Yeah.
Martin.
Okay.
Martin.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. As chair. Uh, now I need a motion. I need a vice chair. Anybody? I will recommend Nick. To be our vice chair for this year.
I have a second.
We have a second. All in favor?
I.
All right. Nick, congratulations.
Okay.
Uh, we also need a secretary. And.
I'll recommend Lindsay for secretary.
Second.
A second. All right. All in favor?
I.
And I. Now, so we got a clean slate to go with that. Thank you, everyone. Um, before I go much further, I do want to thank Charlie for his many years of service. Charlie was not reappointed to the commission, but he will be greatly missed. And he can still give us lots of input, which hopefully he will. Uh, he served many, many years and. He's a good guy. I'm going to miss him. Okay, so now we move on. Uh, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? That of the October fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting?
Yeah, I didn't see any major issues with it.
I agree. It looks fine to me. So I, I move that we pass the minutes as written.
I'll second the motion.
And mo- uh. Motion and a second? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Motion fast.
Good.
Moving right on. Downingtown School District, East High School, fifty Devon Drive. Preliminary final land development plan. Who is representing the school district tonight? You guys are pointing fingers, huh?
They're late in the talk, but I can talk tonight. That's.
Okay.
I'm Justin Brewer with Owl Engineering, um, site engineer for the project. Here with us is, is Jay Kloss, KCBA Architects, and Greg Richardson, terrific planning and design. Um, we've received the consultant's review letters. Um, I believe, uh, those comments are. I don't know if we wanted to step through any comments or any specific questions resulting from those. I know we've got, um. Sightlighting is all, um, resolved. Landscaping was all resolved. Gannett Fleming Sewer was all resolved. Um, McMahon has some remaining comments, so adding some additional signs internal to the project site and, um. Then Dan's, uh, letter. Had a few comments in there. There were some clarifications. We had a, a virtual, uh, conference to discuss a few of the larger concerns, primarily. The first comment, uh, under the zoning ordinance regarding parking, um, there was some typographical errors. Indicating on the previous submission, nine hundred and sixty-seven, uh, proposed spaces. That was incorrect. The correct number, um, isn't even, we've recounted triple counted. There's some lot of, lot of counting on the spaces. We ended up coming up with eight hundred and eighty-four existing spaces, uh, on the project site. We redid all the numbers. Based on the increase in staff, um, and students to today's numbers, um, and, and come up with our required number of spaces being, um. Eight hundred and seventy-two spaces and we are providing eight hundred and eighty-four, as I mentioned before. Um, in that same comment, there was a question about the, um, including the kitchen and custodial staff. The, most of those are part-time employees. I believe the ordinance reads it full-time as the employee staff number, but we did throw those into the, to be conservative through those additional ten employees. It's. Three custodial staff and then seven kitchen staff. Put that into, included that in the, in the numbers, just to be a little conservative on that. And then, um.
If you don't mind, before you jump away from parking spots.
Go ahead.
So was it a counting error or was it a typing error?
Can narrow down exactly where the error was made. I mean, eighty-nine spaces was a lot to be counting, so I'm gonna say it's probably the nine should have been an eight and. The rest of it was, was counting, so.
Yeah, you're not actually reducing the amount of parking.
We, we end up reducing because of the reconfiguration of the loop, uh, for the buses. We do end up losing twelve spaces, um.
Twelve in total.
Twelve in total, yes. So we're still at, cause it's, we look back to the numbers, um, so it's eight ninety-six. Based on everything that's out there now and previous counts, and now we're at eight eighty-four, so we do lose twelve.
Okay.
But you said the minimum you need is like eight seventy-something. Eight seventy-two.
We're still over that.
Correct, yes. So we, we meet all the ordinance requirements as that goes, yes. Um. And let's see, and then the, there was also a comment regarding, uh, student parking passes, because we indicate on the plans, there's nine hundred and forty-seven. Students that are over the age of sixteen, so potentially drivers, and the school does control that internally based on. How many staff spaces they need. Of course, the one, one eighty-eight, I believe, was a staff number, or one ninety-eight was a staff number. And then remaining spaces based on seniority and, and all the other. Principal decisions that he makes, so, um, they control how many actual spaces or, or, who gets to purchase a parking pass, I guess, to say. Um, that was one of the bigger comments that were, was discussed. The other remaining comments, a lot of them were just some planned cleanup items. Um, I think there was some questions regarding, uh, phasing. Sarah, can you, can you go to the phasing plan, just so we can kind of discuss how we're planning to do that? I think that's a little bit more of a detail that we didn't get into last time. So phase one. One here is really just getting everything localized. We will be preserving these side lots, a portion of the larger lot closer to Devon Drive, and then the entirety of the, I call it, the upper lot. Uh, for contractor parking slash lay down areas. Um, that's gonna be. The first summer beginning, you know, you see, it's just the first month of mobilization and whatnot. Phase two is then when we start. Major construction. And again, that's during the summer, summer months, so we'll maintain parking, um, within, within the site. And that, then it includes starting the construction of the bus loop in addition. Um, then we get into phase three.
The Jeff.
Yeah.
Maybe it's two or seven. Summer school.
Just moving as many functions as possible also. They may have some funny sports things going on. We were here to put a lot, we should close this to, uh, Devon Drive or lower lot, well, the tennis courts. For that, we are using a whole lot, the idea in that summer. Is to do all the work, so when the seeds come out in the fall. Is there, so the value of the school that you're going to use seven would be this. Even a lot of use that again this summer. There are some bad issues, there are sports that you. You find hot, we'll tell you else.
The summer school.
There, 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 they have to do that. You know, ours take one of the school court, you need not to pause, even though you're in the. Yes, that is the goal.
You think that, that lot's used a lot more for L Y A games and then, uh. You know. Functions, I think, for, for, on the fields that versus the, the school in the summer.
The goal is to intensively. From June until August, it shows that we will, this first. Hit that, get the site where. Most of it completed, with pieces that would not be completed, with inside the curb or instructions, but can't. Can't put new locks and new laws and things like. Landscaping involved, which you can't remember the plan. But really, the idea is traffic wise. When the time slows out until the students arrive here. Give the new circulation wall. New, uh. So. They need to put in a retaining wall, all on hard steel, the asphalt. And when the students really want it to be ready. You will, wearing course, the final of the best fault is all made based for, was set up some. Too long in the. So it was be damaged to any of the stuff, according to finish two. Cause of travel traffic, other construction traffic. That will be hidden care of. These forms.
So, but you know, secretary striking during the summit on the.
This really went to twice, we're talking for the contractor, uh, base come. School is back in session in August. If all the students is out of line, all the science posted and everything is shooting. So that will just double up. After the music temporarily per year. Do an overlay or overlay and then a. And then we're doing, I believe. By our summer. They can hopefully.
So the only, only, uh, only comment with that, which is just directly. Your plan. Your head is not acceptable, accessible ramps need to be built off. I'm looking, I'm looking for that back to be milled out later on.
It will be about a inch and a half. There, because that's how thick the, the, uh. Know is the overlays. That what we see is, it says, it's all ramped up. So that we should have an action crystal. Then wheels up. Kind of instruments, they move a lot of these out instantly. They've asked us to make sure that that was also.
And the school district's taking responsibility for informing all students, faculty, parents about the new traffic pattern across summertime?
Right, we had a conversation. For. Explained where.
Great.
Well, continuing on, I, I think Jay kind of covered after the phase two, first summer. Getting all the site work done and then by phase three, once school starts back. And we're working with those, those final things and inside the building and then phase four is. Doing the wearing course and getting everything wrapped up. Gus, what's the construction schedule of the additions and infill projects?
Construction of the infill is to start, uh, phase two through June to April. And it completes in, uh, base three, uh, with the end of that summer. So we have even higher, there's a maximum round time. Relative places in the building, the solar bases are not waiting to land now that he worked around different departments. Some of the departments get renovated in the first summer, some of the departments get renovated in the second summer. Again, school cannot do this well. We haven't had a good education. The dishes on the internet, which is a major issue. Up in Y C A on the east end. That can be functioning totally all the time and will do that. So there are actually building permits set that will be submitted to the township. Four phases, the lineage of where known contractors are allowed, not allowed to work. Separating students and separately contractors, fire rights, it's maintained. I will set up the other grid. So it's fairly complicated to do this kind of work behind. Kids. We have documented it, so it's a contractor's obligation to be included in that in the survey.
Does, and I guess that would include the driveway for what will become the bus loop through the school year, because that would be. You have the lay down area on the parking lot on the east side and the major construction.
That's the only way I'm able to believe.
Yeah.
Site, uh, extended dungeon, growing. Ancient missing. And this, the western R T line, the circulation there is intended to be only functional. In August, the point two thirty, even though the contractors do. We are saying it's kind of cut off at the top, but by a tri-party agreement with, uh, multiple parcels. We are asking contractors making a contractual obligation. For contractors to park in the L Y A lot. They will always be better, simple's gonna be here, some of it. But they are given that lot, district has, so they'll maintain the, the area, they do not trash. So, uh, police, the contractors will be out of there. Here, three o'clock, so it's still available for the after now, this stuff. So separating contractors, we expect that whole circulation ban to be functional. And safe and used in the fall of that's all.
I, I just mean that. The contractors will be out of there at three, three thirty, but they'll be there five thirty or six A M.
They come for your.
Yeah, so when they're, when they're actually building. The addition, it's right up against that driveway, so there's always gonna be equipment, workers, vehicles, all kinds of things going in and out right there. How does that work with the buses? Traveling through there at that time? Is there a plan for that?
You keep, we will put in the disposal stations, I will deliver. You didn't see you, you're not, you're pretty tough, man. You said, materials in those two periods, you never have to worry between, you have a new label, you know, shore. And warning, you know, some guy shows up, show up on the song. So we will put in the same thing that we did there. They are not allowed to be certain hours to.
Okay.
Because this is primarily both of what we get done, it's also helpful. Schedule one of those people, when contractors, we have a triple that, uh, that's anywhere, everybody knows all of them. It's concerned, and it's time. And I wouldn't say anything less than, and that would be pitching. The buses, kind of like, that's one spot, but at least mostly school employees, which is bus drivers. And contractors, which we can attract without them. It's golden penalized when it don't. Do the way I play. We're already a couple of choices for all to. We're getting straight.
At certain times, they may need a laborer assigned to be the traffic cop right there. That's just, yeah, okay.
That's actually that's all part of it.
You haven't, you thought about it, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
The shell's gonna be up by then, right?
It's true.
Okay.
And the, the show actually has four drivers, well, again, now I know. The show is probably hopefully going to be well along by the winter, uh, twenty-two, three. But there could be a lot going on in the fall.
Okay.
I love this. That's why the lay down area is supposed to be made, to be minimized and unpacked for what it has to have.
Yeah.
We send your revenue. As an employer will not try.
Okay. I'm gonna break a little bit here. I have someone that wants to ask a question. And because we're on this topic, I'm gonna let him ask the question.
It's just one, I really appreciate.
Since we're on this topic that you, you want to address.
Then don't it's a little. Yeah, it's right there. So I have a different kind of perspective, but I'm kind of confused. Most of the last planning meeting. When they, they were proposing adding, putting an addition on, on the school. And there were never getting beside myself who had concerns about that, with the school population going down. When the site, uh, in front of not getting pretty nice, where they now accommodate the secondary, senior high school, they're gonna add on more buildings, has that come? Cause I thought that one, they would have taken that back and look here, they're acting like it's, it's gonna prove, is it gonna prove? Build that new wings?
Well, that's what we're working on right now, yeah. Um. I'll let the school district handle it, but from what I understand, this built, this wing. Is, um, they're revamping. The wing and some classrooms. You guys can answer that question better.
This will now. This published. How? And. From my, the information that I. From the school district, even with other people, and that they're lucky to have one lunch. And that's a period. So they're coming. Being, so their only kids can eat at the same time, if I'm wrong, please correct. Am I wrong or am I right?
Personally correct.
What, what part is correct?
We are adding a wing to incorporate, among other things, one hour lunch, but. We're also adding science rooms because there's a shortage, uh, education's changed, so in two thousand twenty-three. People are interested in more science, so we're adding science wings there.
It's your body game now, and you can do, there's like enough for last things like that, you know. And you have. Like, you're gonna fill in your courtyard, the classroom you might need.
We are filling in the courtyard with flexible space, that's correct, educational space, but there's functions that we're building on the inner specials. There are things that don't. Go into a typical classroom, um, things like the science wing, family consumer science, there's a big demand for that, it's kind of interesting, uh. We're going very techie and very non-techie, so, uh, family consumer science is being put into this wing in order to accommodate that. We are. Family consumer science doesn't fit very well in a regular classroom. It usually takes about two classrooms, uh, because of the cooking component and very specialized ventilation. Very specialized, uh, equipment, so. Um, no, it, it fits much better into an addition. That's kind of what's going on.
It's all for a hundred and thirty, but you're penalty a wing. So there, so the kids can all at the same time?
That is.
Makes sense to me, um.
Well, you can take your, adjust the school board. The school board has made a commitment. They visited other high schools.
We're living with, what living with. You're gonna run a number way into the facility and you can't accommodate right now. And you don't have to shoot. Well, the instruction vehicles, everything else going in there, plus the town. Right? When the population's going down. And you can fill in the oil yards and open it out.
We are filling in the courtyard.
It's all what you want, but when it's gonna. Those are present for years. On watch, I, I never. You know. So you can possibly see a guy as a counselor or whatever, slow roast. Those kids are going to be leaving that facility at lunchtime. You won't be able to hold them back. They're gonna be lost. Being to go to the Wawa, when you get them now, when it's lunch, it's a disaster to make it, but I'll.
All right, thanks, Mr. Summer, because we're dealing with this, not, and her issue, you need to go to the school board, and, and that, and, and word is real.
Say you know that, so what, no, no, I just. That's fine, I really.
Okay. We can point out, we do meet the ordinances. We are okay for coverage. We're okay for parking. We're okay for building heights, so we are building within. The prescribed limitations set forth by the planning commission and the commissioners or supervisors.
Right, right.
Might I, I mean. Might I add, just as a community member with students in the school, um, you know, I think the, one of the approaches was to address kind of mental health, uh, concerns within the community after. You know, the seven suicides that happened, um, in, you know. Recent years, so I think there, there was a mental health kind of component to the change. In a demand from the community to, to explore new options. I, I. I don't have the research behind it, but I think that that was a component.
Don't swat.
It is becoming.
Like I said, we can't, because I, I have heard other school districts are trying this right now and it is working. I, I, but like I said, that's not our, that's not our discussion tonight, so. Okay, thank you, thanks. Okay, thank you for answering this question.
Okay, move on.
But that kind of took me to the end of, of. Baby Wash Dan's letter, um. I think the other one, uh, I think I touched on all of them, so I don't know if there was any other specific questions that. The planning commission had or anything the township staff wanted to add.
I just had a question, uh, on the McMahon lot, on the traffic here. This. You know, I read through this and, uh, I just didn't understand it. I think it's because I'm a layman here and just talk about, uh, keep moving sign and stuff. Can you just go into this a little bit here?
Certainly.
But what, what? You know, what is he, uh?
Primarily, it's just to.
Is this, is this where it's inside the school where, where you start to move to the, uh?
Just to help facilitate, adding some additional signage where they see opportunities to help facilitate that circulation pattern. Through, through the, uh, property.
So the intersection he's talking about is the first one you come into at the school. You know, after you turn off Devon Drive, you come up and then, then the, uh. Or cars will move to the right and the buses go to the left. Is that what you're? Is that what he's talking about or did it?
I believe he's talking.
Yeah.
Is he, cause he's saying, please remove one, they signed us across walk. I think it's over in. See if we're northwest, I think northwest would be over here. So it's asking to remove a, uh, one-way sign. And he, he provided some markups.
The league having.
Tipped it a little bit, um, to avoid any confusion. Um, it's where that would be. Or where the one-way movement. Would be. Um. So he, he provided a, a markup of our plan saying, hey, take this, take this sign, put it over here, just to adjust it a little bit so that.
Okay, so yeah, anything that's gonna be able to improve.
Right.
See, yes, it is beneficial to us here. Um. So, and this will all be in place. By August, twenty twenty-three, this, this, this rerouting, you, you were saying that the, uh, that is.
We have one other thing that we're talking, it's N B S permit. And so we did that, he's going to draw a bid in February. With the invention of platform, there's more material from one of the sound type, uh, structures, it started with stress in the day of. That's a little.
Right. Just a quick question on that. You still only have one entrance or two? I know the last meeting was a lot of concern about that and. The perception was you're gonna go back and look at, have a killing one entrance or maybe two thousand people a day, and we're getting down.
Right, there's only, only one entrance. It's one entrance.
Yep, correct.
There's no other, there's no other option.
There is. Cause I know.
No. Uh.
Why are we on?
We're not letting them get away with anything. We're trying to improve. What we have. Cause it's struggling right now, so if this improvement works, it's, it's for the betterment of you too and your community. So let's hope for the best.
I didn't have any other questions on, on the other letters, it's. Everything seems, seemed fine.
Dan, do you have any major qualms?
Um. So. Then, um, uh, went through the letter and feel that everything can be adequately addressed. I think the, um, I don't know if you were just asking, you're gonna run through the stuff on Devon, is that one?
I was gonna bring that up.
I think it's important to, uh, to talk through and present to you, say, a new plan came in here, um, but, but my comments are all reasonable to, to address. The big issue I was concerned about. Was that parking counts, where the numbers came back. They clarified that, um, they'd actually submitted a revised, uh, sheet to me today. With those added numbers and I did a chance to look through them, they seem to be okay. Um, so they meet the ordinance for parking, uh, the remainder of my comments can be, uh, can be adequately stressed. Um, and they're just technical, just cleanup stuff for the most part.
I do have one question follow-up, though, so that they're asking a waiver request regarding pipes. To be able to use pipes less than eighteen inches in diameter, and I think you said that would pay if, as long as they're gonna maintain them. Is that just the code that says?
Yeah, this, the, the ordinance specified, it was really meant for any public storm sewer that's being dedicated here to township in our streets. We don't want fifteen or twelve-inch pipes. In our public roads, the ordinance doesn't specify that, and, uh, so in, in reality, there could be interpretation that a waiver wouldn't be required because this is a private storm sewer. Um, uh, but better, abundance of caution, they just put a waiver on their, on their rest. Um, and this is, this is no, no storm sewer within Devon Drive. They're not making any improvements, any public storms, or this is a.
And in their application, the other. Issue was the traffic study. Which is now gonna be completed, it looks like post-construction.
Did discuss that with, uh. The school district earlier, they had indicated that they would be willing to put up their district roads for the. Who starts the traffic study, uh, which would include the whole line of campus from the elementary school, high school. Will all of the traffic on.
Can we put, uh, is there any stipulation on there as of the timing, like? Six months, twelve months?
Can we put, is there any stipulation on there as of the timing, like six months, twelve months?
Yeah, I, I think that would be pretty reasonable to come back through and, and including with your recommendation, if you're so inclined to today, to, uh, to put a timeframe in saying that having it within a, within X amount of period of time following, following that, um, following the completion of these improvements. And I, I guess ultimately here's, um, the, when's the, when's your phase, your last phase ends?
What, twenty twenty-four?
August summer, twenty twenty-four.
So you would want to have it here, maybe you're gonna ask Greg, the traffic engineer, you would want to have that set for how soon after that? If they open back up fully complete September two thousand and twenty-four, have the traffic patterns back in place there. Um.
Well, they'll have a whole year under their belt by then, because the new pattern is going in place in two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah, but they'll make construction.
So I was still gonna put a stipulation of post-construction of two thousand and twenty-four. That way it's a whole year of them getting.
Right, and the thing I had, because. They should be who is, you know, reading, yeah. Reading us, I mean.
Yeah, I think you would want to wait till after, after the start of school in September two thousand and twenty-four, period of time after that. And you, and traffic, traffic wise, you think Greg here?
Just to give you an example, I, one for the TE school district recently, they've been required a lot of. Uh, they put stipulation in the pattern study, uh, six months after.
Not far off.
We actually, uh, the school district and the township agreed that we actually did new traffic counts in October of that year, because they felt that, and it was only staff. This is a little bit more intricate because you're dealing with parents, students and the buses. And I think, yeah, I think Dale's is, is the, when you're talking about the acclimating themselves to that system, they, yeah, they will have sort of like a year, but I think to get the construction equipment out of the mix. I think you, you, you could be safe in saying something like, even, uh, you want to do it before the holidays. You don't really want to do it in November. Uh, so I would say if you get it done by end of October, at least get the traffic data collection of two thousand and twenty-four. I think you should be safe.
So that'll give them a year plus a couple.
Plus a few months for the next year to actually.
For the construction equipment to disappear and.
Yeah.
Barriers and whatnot.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend two thousand and twenty-three because you're still gonna have all that heavy.
I was fine with twenty-four.
Yeah.
As I noted before, like, there's gonna be a lot of construction site logistics.
Yeah.
In place throughout.
And McMahon is the traffic consultant for, um, for different township too. So we, what we did for them was we agreed that this is the date we would do the traffic counts. Certainly don't want to do it on day where there's special activities going on at school. So if we could maybe pencil something in, you know, somewhere, get the data collection done later than Oc, end of October, early November, we should be good.
So if we said within three months of post-construction.
Yeah, that would give you a change actually to the data collection and, uh, complete the study also. Because it usually takes about four to six weeks to complete the study.
Correct. And if construction falls behind too, it'll just kind of push that a little bit, but it'll still maintain the same principle.
Yeah, yeah. You could say maybe the end, by the end of December two thousand and twenty-four, that would carry your three months.
That would be.
Does anybody have any qualms against?
No, I think that's all right. I think if you have a specific date, it's my.
Parents, kids, a year to adapt.
Okay.
But then, at least then they're on the hook that they gotta get it done.
Okay.
Yeah, that timing is a good.
Okay, we'll go along with that. Okay.
All right, I think I got one more thing to talk about while I'm up here. Uh, we've been working with the township, um, and we've discussed, if we could go to the sheet six and seven. That will give you, these are more internal, the close-up details. Uh, we prepared, prepared a plan set, that's perfect, thank you. Um, of the improved pedestrian accommodations on Devon Drive. And, um, the, what we were proposing is enhancing some of the existing crossings out there. Um, to make them more prominent by improving signage and pavement markings. First one I'll start with is really at the, uh, L Y A driveway and the student lot. That's the driveway here. There's an existing crossing there today, but what we propose to do is to, again, further enhance that with some improved pavement markings and put some additional signage out there, more modern signage. And the signage is right up in here. It's just, uh, you're, you're more, uh, up-to-date signage. Then the second item that, uh, Mario is the main driveway into the high school. There's an existing crossing on, I'll call it on the eastern leg of the intersection. And we believe that it's, uh, more appropriate because of the fact that we have, it's a painted area, I'll call it space waste or a painted median area. What we would propose is to construct a raised area to provide a safe haven for the pedestrians so they could basically come across if they have to stop or, but uh, technically, you know, vehicles, drivers should be stopping in that area for state law, but if they don't, then at least there's a safe haven for the, the pedestrians, either be students or people using the school grounds uh, to utilize the existing sidewalk system and to provide a new crossing here in a safe haven. And then we would put a new crossing, uh, on this location and eliminate the crossing that shows that's existing today on the eastern end. And then proceeding further to the east is we would improve the pavement markings in this area and again, provide a, a new raised island with the safe haven. This is, I believe, the YMCA driveway. And then again, utilize the existing crossings. We, we understand there is some uh, pedestrian activity in this area that's, uh, that doesn't have a crossing there today and uh, make good use of it, not only for the school a, as well as the YMCA that's at that location. And we've been working with, uh, staff as well as McMahon, uh, your consultants, uh, to, you know, come up with a plan, uh, that is agreeable to everyone, but we believe this will greatly enhance the safety and uh, along the, along Devon Drive for, for the pedestrians.
Let me ask, is the hash, uh, part that would be painted, the raised would be the lighter part there?
Raised would be this like, you know, almost if you want to call it like a submarine, it's like a odd long shape there. It's a raised median. You'll have, uh, 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 multiple curb on the median, I believe. I'm not sure if we're showing multiple or if raised. Either way, there's going to be curb, it's a curved island. And it will be basically, uh, full concrete here with a, uh, look, basically a, an opening in the middle.
And side, and sidewalk does exist on that, um, far side.
It does, yes. And you can see we're building new ADA ramps on either location. Again, improving, you can't see the signage here, but again, same signage that we're using at the other, uh, two locations.
Yeah.
What type, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What type of like alert system? Is it a push? Is it motion?
Right now, we're going with passive system, which is just signage and pavement markings.
So there's no lights that'll light up or anything like that?
At this, opposing that. You know, again, we presented this to the township and been working with you on, on that and we'll see where it goes from there. I believe we can get away with just the, uh, the passive system right now.
Could you go back to?
There's a school zone in Sarah too, so that's.
Correct.
Back to that one, yeah.
Is that?
What you're referring to possibly is like what we call rapid flashing LEDs.
Yeah, when I go down to like the beach, the Delaware beaches, they have like these giant flashing yellow lights, but people are also going fifty, forty-five, fifty versus twenty.
Yeah, you see them down in Westchester or some down west.
Exactly, there too.
And Malvern has them too, yep. We, we did one for, um, in Easttown Township right on Route thirty for, you know, where the, um, urban outfitters anthropology is.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We did one for, TBD did one for, for the developer.
And those can always be added after.
They could, they could, but at least this is a, you had, do have a school zone in the area. Uh, so at least they're, you know, during the times when you see the greatest pedestrian activity, we'll have slower speeds in that area.
And you didn't think a, uh, I guess you didn't think a, um, a raised medium was necessary at the student parking lot entrance there?
Well, it's, it's difficult to do that with the left turn lanes. Um, you would have to widen the road and, um, I don't know how that would work with left turn lanes. Here we had the opportunity because there's a left turn lane here with what we call a space waster, widening already. It's just pavement with markings. That we had the opportunity to, uh, replace that with a raised aisle.
And you can't, can't bring the other aisle, you know, the, well, I guess, yeah, there's a road there. I forget the name of that street, uh.
This right here?
Yeah, there is, because I can't.
So, uh, sorts of a more river.
River.
River, river, yeah. River Road, yeah, River Drive.
You couldn't bring that island or put an island there. I guess it's not, yeah, I guess. Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, sidewalk.
Just trying to get a feel for.
Yeah, if you go to the next sheet, I think it shows that road a little bit in the relationship. We didn't put a match.
Oh, I see, yeah.
That's right here. That would be right here.
Okay, okay.
So I think the two crossings here is more than adequate, I believe, to serve the needs of the YMCA and the school itself.
Okay.
And on the construction schedule, when is that plan to be put in?
Uh, you guys want to maybe address that?
We should be moving up for your head of the school. That, um, and some actually have a plan with Daniel.
Okay, so it'll be hopefully part of phase two then. Understood. Okay, that makes sense.
Probably get it done quicker too, you know, just to, if they're focusing on just that as opposed to a general contractor subbing it out to different entities, so. So, so this, this is gonna be, we talked about this today, I mean, um, this is gonna be kind of a condition of this approval, but it's gonna be somewhat independent, um, of this so that they could get this work complete if there's any holdup for the permitting for this. So, so, so this is being done as part of this project, but we're gonna prove this as kind of a roadway improvement project independent of the land development application for the school. Um, to keep them somewhat separate and on separate tracks and, and so on, uh, but we're gonna have this all documented here and have this plan separate quarter, but, um, it's gonna be, um, you'll, I mean, we'll have to work through some of those details about how it's gonna administratively be done in-house, so.
So if we were to go with the recommendation today, we're not, we're gonna leave this to the side for the time being.
Um, I mean, I think this, I don't know, I guess we didn't really think that through here about from your guys' recommendation, but um, I, I don't think that, um, uh, I mean, they're committed to do this. Um, I think you're, um.
It can go in.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily know if you need to comment on it here. We have, waiting for the McMahon associates or traffic engineer to review and give comments back on these drawings, but, um, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a condition within our review letter, so I don't, I don't think you need to comment on one way or the other, something we're handling, I guess internally here, so. It's addressed in our review letter, so you're, you're basically, your recommendation applies for the township consultant review letters. If you were so inclined to make recommendations, right, so.
Okay, well, I like the added traffic. I think it's definitely what's needed for that area.
Yeah, Detroit, what do you mean that?
Just the, the new traffic control with the pedestrian.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's, that's a wager, perfect.
Um, it'll be interesting to see.
Yeah.
How it all affects everything in the end.
See how many students on.
And, and that would be part of our traffic, so too, that we would document all, not only big or, not only post-development, but uh, we would document the pedestrian crossings.
During the traffic study?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, and we were talking about that, just if, you know, we found that lights were necessary after the trap, we could do that if need be, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Looks good. Anybody have any questions on the traffic study? Well, he's right there. I'm good.
Nope.
Okay, anybody have any other comments or questions about?
A project?
About the project.
Good.
Do we have anybody online? Or Zoom?
I think this is the Shorma wants to ask a question.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead, but, but remember, remember what we're dealing with.
Yeah. But I have a couple of questions about the traffic and. Very familiar, I mean, of course, thank you for that. Um, has anybody been observing the morning traffic going into the high school, who are putting these class together? I mean, when you put this way together, has anybody been at the site watching traffic? Now, now it goes into the high school and on the pre-adjourned, opening and closing school day. No, I have not. Okay, that's fine. I missed my respect, because the first beginning, the, uh, the rules were, I was normally, I encourage you to it's a little bit of a raise and having to have to happen, plus the first rule of observation. Daily, there are near misses on that, on those crosswalks, people are on phones. They're looking down and they just go right through the crosswalk, but they haven't been a way of tapping their instruction and, and, and really it may get much, much safer. The other thing on there, I don't know if you can show it here, on the river, as they're coming up west on Devon, and they take a left into the high school entrance. There's a little bottleneck there. They've done a lot of improving on there now. I don't know what they're doing, but it is, they, they're moving much faster. However, if you look at that, you've got buses going west on Devon. And they fly out there, that's just the way it is. You've got two or three buses ready to take a left, they all have, have their turn. But what happens, what I've seen over and over here are cars on the right of those buses, tapping to get through to go straight west on Devon to go out to one thirteen. They're not taking left corner of the high school, they're just going on their way. And I just see over and over where the cars flying out there and the kid who jumped out. And almost get hit, there's, I see three or four of those. And so they all wait, they jump out, they can't see the crosswalk even from that side, because the bus is blocking. So you can't see kids going down where you have to deal with because of our buses blocking. Life really made a big difference on, on, yes, no. I mean, the other downside was what? Putting them up in our clauses, I mean, it's just been seen, and it was my mom, because they, uh, for children there, and I see people every day. I saw a lady yesterday in her car stroller trying to get across to the Y and they should have a week, no one's stopping her. If you have a desperate, you're not gonna be delighted, they're gonna, they're gonna stop and she's gonna get across there. So that's just, uh, from my perspective, watching it all the time now, it's, it's on her. Yeah, that's because we were talking last night about traffic around the school. They're not gonna uh, link around entire school now to, to make a traffic fast school, walking faster. The circulation around school gates, it'll be two lanes in a while, right? So you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a two-lane around the entire school facility going both ways, right?
No, no, I don't, I don't think that's right.
No.
No. No, it is two-way around the, to the, to the, to the, as, as you come up towards the school, we move to the, uh, to the right, the buses will go to the left, cars will go to the right. And then we'll circulate, but not go all the way around. They'll, they'll have a turnaround each of those and come back, back the way they came in.
That doesn't seem, came through with safety, you have, uh, around the entire.
No, that's, that's what we have now, and that's what they're eliminating.
Separating the, the buses and the cars, which maybe the flow of buses will be faster and maybe there won't be a lot of waiting on Devon, which that would be nice.
You see, so, so what information, you know? They don't really allow us to, uh, probably.
It would be interesting to see if, if kids use that island to, to unload. I, I don't know if that would be, that would probably not be a good thing, but, yeah.
So, you know, they're, they're used to going across and your friends, they were, you know, like a side lined up and I was, was just, just to keep that in mind.
Yep.
Same areas.
Well, well, like we say, we're, we're hoping that this improves things. That's what we're hoping for. So I think we're gonna go with this plan for now, and if we decide later on when they do a traffic study again, that other, other, uh, options are, are needed, then, then we'll address it at that time.
Okay. Is anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom, any other comments, questions? Anybody on the board?
Nice, all right.
Um, I'll make a motion to recommend this to move forward, basically, so.
Okay.
I can read all the verbiage here, um. We'll do a recommendation granting the request of waivers and approval of the preliminary slash final land development plan pursuant to compliance with the township consultant review letters. And all state and county approvals, including DEP and CCPC. The plan should also incorporate the Devon Drive road improvements for recording. Additionally. We recommend that. Rescuro be put in place for the traffic impact study to be conducted post construction. Uh, the report should be provided to the township by the end of twenty twenty four. And that study should include the Lionville School Campus area, which should include the high school, elementary school and middle school area.
I'll second, I'll second the motion, I have a motion in a second, do we need to read the all the review letters now?
Yeah. Think we're good on that, so.
I have a motion. And a second, all in favor?
All right.
I, opposed? Motion pass, our our recommendation passes, so hopefully you guys can get moving forward.
Guys, have a.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, that was the only thing on our agenda for this evening. Uh, I do have announcements, the one announcement I have for this evening is the Board of Supervisors meeting. For this month. Will be held the seventeenth. Not the normal Monday. At seven thirty P M. Okay, and with that, do I have, anybody has any other? Questions, answers, opinions?
Anything?
Anyone? Then, so, do I have a ma- have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second, John?
I have a second, all in favor?
I.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Very good.